Good evening, we're gonna call the Wabashaw City Council Meeting back to order. We had a 6:00 PM workshop on our capital improvement plan. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the rare occasion where the mayor is on a well-deserved vacation, so the council president has to do something tonight. We have no guest speaker. Next item would be public comments. Anybody wanna address the council? Okay. Changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, I was directed by the city attorney to that we need to give a summary of the June 19th closed council meeting conclusions pursuant to Minnesota law when an employee evaluations are performed. I'm gonna add a section of 7.5 to be right before the consent agenda. Don't have a mayor tonight, so I think I'm gonna go read something here. As we get ready to celebrate the birthday of the USA, I believe it is appropriate to read the beginning of the Declaration of Independence. In Congress, July 4th, 1776. The unanimous declaration of the 13 United States of America. When in the course of a human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. I think it's amazing that 54 years after this document was signed, settlers were establishing the city of Wabashaw on the banks of the Mississippi River under the terms of the Fourth Treaty of Prairie Duchesne with the Indian tribes. I would encourage everyone to take the time to read the full Declaration of Independence and the four pages of the Constitution of the United States. And I think I could speak for the city council to wish everyone a fun and safe 4th of July celebration. Let's hope for good weather for the fireworks. Alright. Next thing is committee reports. Let's start with Tim in the planning.
So we met on June 11th. We approved a conditional use permit for Gurkens for a additional storage silo as well as removal of their offices. And we also talked a little bit about solar gardens on kinda big businesses like the school, and should we regulate them, should offer comments and stuff like that, which probably more discussion will be forthcoming on that. Other than that, that was about it. Our July meeting will be canceled, so our next meeting will be August 13th.
Thanks. Port Authority?
Port Authority met on June 18th, Thursday, 3rd Tuesday of the month. After paying bills, we had a pretty robust discussion about our continued work on an economic development plan for downtown, and well, for Wabashaw in general. Each commission member was tasked with coming up with some ideas for different areas that maybe need some, that need to be addressed and just kinda think outside the box. And we ended up with several pages of thoughts and considerations. We'll take that information and continue to kinda refine and condense that, and hopefully we'll start to formulate some kind of a plan or action plan with that. So more to follow, but that was really a great discussion. We talked a little bit about our revolving loan fund criteria, and how we're gonna work through that process of those applicants that come through. And that kinda tied into the economic development side of it as well. What are our target goals for our revolving loan fund? So, more to follow on that. That was about it.
Thanks. Utilities?
We met yesterday, just business as usual. The one thing we did do was look at the Fitzgerald and Carl's Platts, which are gonna be up on our general business. There are no public utilities proposed as part of these, so there wasn't really much for us to discuss. So our approval was more of a formality than anything else on these, so. That's it.
Darren, you wanna say something about fire department, or, I guess you guys get some kuda for a nice rescue this weekend?
Yeah, we did a nice swift water rescue, and I can speak, I guess, on that. Yeah, we got called out, I think it was Sunday.
Saturday.
Saturday. Thanks, Tim, for that jinx. I met with Tim on Saturday morning, we talked a little bit, and he says, "With this heat, I can see us going to the Zemberl bottoms," or something really hot, and sure enough, we did. We went down, there was four hikers that were, three hikers that were down there hiking since Wednesday. Somebody, a couple horses come by and seen their car floating down by the red bridge, or the iron bridge, and heard some people hollering for help, so we went down there, got paged down there, and sent Kellogg down from the other side of the Zemberl there, just in case they could hear something from that end, and after about 45 minutes, an hour of time, we were able to contact them with our flat bottom and bring them back to safety, and about their car, but in the meantime, the water was coming up at about, pace of about four or five inches an hour. So the hour and a half that we were there, it went up dramatically, and so, it was good. It was, the outcome was good. But anytime you deal with swift water and rising things, it's just kind of a, puts you on edge a little bit, but we got things done, and the outcome was good.
Sounds like it was great teamwork between the Wabashaw, Kellogg, and the DNR.
Yeah, yeah, DNR showed up there, we called them right away to see if they'd get their airboats down there. And they showed up within about, about a half hour, 35 minutes, they were there with one, had another one on the way, and they just got them off the trailer, and we're just ready to head back into the waters a little bit, and our flat bottom had found them, so it was still good resources. So, that's all I got.
Thanks. Joe, anything? Alright, we're ready for the administrator's report?
And I got Tony's street and parks update. He had an opportunity as a veteran to go to the Hunkers game, so he took that. Street Commission, they only had some questions regarding the vacation of the Fitzgerald Platt, the vacations that are on there, and Brian's gonna speak to that when we get to that item. We got kind of a roundabout way to go about this. Parks, there was more discussion on the Bird City. Improvements to Vets Park, and picking up, they're looking at picking up a new statue this week. Gary, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Okay. Excellent. My update, the mayor asked me to share that on August 18th, the NEC is planning a community event in the opening, in the open space. Chief Stark closing a Big Joe Alley for that, which is just the area directly abutting the open space, so the condo people will be able to get to their condos. It's just the area of what used to be the pavers. So it's called Soaring Higher Together. It's Sunday, August 18th, from 1 to 4. Really what it is, is a free community event celebrating 30 years of inspiration and the future of an expanded National Eagle Center in Wabashaw. Live music from the Sheldon Brass Band, live eagle program, kids activities, festival food, and farmer's market, and some cultural entertainment. As for an office thing, we'll be reviewing budgets with staff. We've got our department head meeting tomorrow, so we'll be working through getting a first draft together for the council. And we have an item today to talk about when we'll have that first workshop going from there. On Friday, our, what I call the Wabashaw team, or the local team, met with, met amongst themselves to discuss the core plan. We are working on a response to a few questions from the Army Corps, and then we will be planning a presentation to the Port Authority at their next meeting. As things are looking to be ramping up here rather expeditiously with this, so work will be getting, getting going there pretty, pretty quickly here. Craig, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I would hope we get moving, yeah.
Yeah. Now I'm gonna get on my soapbox a little bit. We have several Facebook sites throughout the city for different departments, and then for general city business as well. These are for our departments to share information that they can. Sometimes we cannot share information, and we will not until it's a safe time to do that. These sites are not intended to be a comment box, nor to call out staff personally for comments or complaints around the city. Far too often, Facebook, as it relates to the purpose for the city, has led to the creation of and sharing of false information that then we are forced to spend a lot of time answering to and correcting. If you hear a bit of information, or want to share an issue, or just a comment with the city, let's do it the old-fashioned way, and pick up the phone, send us an email, tap on our shoulder during work hours, and we'll deal with those things. If it's an emergency, obviously call 911, or if it's an urgent, if it's a matter that you do wish to talk to police about, they do have a non-emergency number that's on our website as well. And our website has all the contact information that people should need to get ahold of not only the departments, but also you as council members and the mayor. It has your emails and phone numbers on that as well, so obviously if things don't get better, we will have to end the use of Facebook as our communication tool, or we'll have to look at the functions of it as we use it, so. Please, public, remember that. If you have something to say to one of us, you know, let's do it in a professional manner, pick us up, pick up the phone, give us a call. Same thing with your council people, it's not, it's not fair to people to be personally attacked in a social media forum when people are hiding behind cue boards, so. There, I'll get off my soapbox, but please pay attention to that.
Okay. As directed by the city attorney, I'm going to read a summary of the June 19th closed council meeting. On June 19th, 2019, City Council held its closed meeting to evaluate the performance of City Administrator Chad Springer. In accordance with governing law, at this city meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the previously mentioned closed meeting, the city is required to summarize the conclusion of the evaluation of the performance of City Administrator Chad Springer reached by the City Council at the closed meeting. City Administrator Chad Springer did not request that the meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of City Administrator Chad Springer's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. A summary of the conclusions of the evaluation are as follows. A, City Administrator Chad Springer is unable on a short-term basis to work full-time hours in his position with the city due to a medical issue. B, City Administrator Chad Springer will be allowed a reduction in work hours to 27 to 30 hours per week from June 10th, 2019 through no later than August 18th, 2019, and be permitted to use any accrued paid time off to account for the number of hours worked below 40 hours per week based on the motion that Chad Springer will be allowed a reduction in work hours to 27 to 30 hours per week from June 10th, 2019 until no later than August 18th, 2019, and that he be permitted to use any accrued paid time off to account for the number of hours worked below 40 hours per week based collectively on his recommendations from his healthcare professional. C, the city will formally, likely formally evaluate the performance of City Administrator Chad Springer again in approximately 10 weeks from June 19th, 2019, the date of the foregoing evaluation. So that, that takes care of that requirement. Alright, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We're gonna be trying to approve the June 4th regular council minutes and the June 19th special council minutes and warrants. Can I get a motion and a second to, for that?
Don't move.
I'll second.
The only thing I'll say is change the mayor on the 19th, please.
I'm sorry?
On the 19th minutes, the mayor's listed as rolling.
Oh, really? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passed unanimously. We don't have a public hearing this evening, so we'll go into general business. The first one is the Fitzgerald Edition final plat. I believe that's where they're just splitting that lot into two parcels. We still have to do this in two, two separate deals, where we're gonna approve it tonight, and we'll do the vacation
Yes.
next in August.
Well, at a date to be determined. Yep. Brian, are you gonna sort of clarify?
I'm gonna abstain from both plats, just because my company did the work. I didn't do the work personally. Scott Beagle from my office is here as well, if we have any questions pertaining to the plats. But I was just gonna give a little bit of a summary on the vacation of the streets in the approval of the plat. We got in a little bit of a procedural quandary because the vacation of the plats wasn't published as part of the public notice, the vacation of the streets. So we can't have a public hearing, we can't approve a vacation of the streets because it wasn't there. So the plat for us tonight, so we discussed different ways that we could approve the plat and still procedurally make this happen. The county recorder, Jeff Aiken, was consulted, and he has no issue with the plat being recorded before the streets are vacated. Basically, the streets are just underlying right away. Plating a lot over top of them doesn't get rid of them, they're still there. They're shown in the lot. So if council chooses tonight, you can approve this plat outright, and the vacation will take its course. Or you could approve the plat with the condition that the streets are vacated as well. That's the one thing, we talked about it, the more I think about it, I don't know if that condition needs to be put on this. The lot can still be platted, it's more of a vehicle to divide this property between two family members. So, if lot one is platted in those streets, if the city for some reason decides we don't want them vacated, it does nothing to the lot. It's been this way forever. Those are undeveloped streets, too, it's cornfield. So the idea is if someone takes lot one in the future and says, "Okay, I wanna make lots, make homes, do something with it," any kind of lot configuration will have to be approved by planning and city council anyway. And at that time, if Dugan is to be extended through to County Road 30, that condition can be put on that plat when it's developed. And then the street can be positioned appropriately that fits with what they're gonna be. Right now, it's at a, not even a 90-degree angle, the County Road 30, and no one would wanna build it that way, to have it, so leaving it the way it is, I don't really see any value to it. So I guess what's before us tonight is the plat approval.
Without the vacation.
Without the vacation, and yeah, I just, I just don't see making the vacation a condition even.
Right.
You know, it just occurred to me.
We'll come back if we wanna continue with it.
Yep. But plating the lot and not vacating the streets, it literally does nothing to the property. Like, it is exactly what it is today, it's just a lot instead of a meets and bounds parcel.
Got it. I'll make that motion to approve the plats we have in front of us.
I'll second it.
Without the vacation.
Without.
Any discussion? All in favors?
I have one, one point is on a couple of these two, both of these items here, the Carl's item, the Carl's property and the Fitzgerald property, so they're both splits, and you can, you can split your property like that fairly easy. But I'm wondering, so this is really a zoning thing, and I'm wondering, shouldn't, would it be better to have this go through the zoning commission? And I'm not talking about these two parcels tonight, but I'm talking about in the future. Would something like this be better to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission instead of coming to the council straight off like this, because
Certainly look into it.
Because for one thing, not all the council members are familiar with all of the land issues, and the people in the Planning and Zoning Commission are supposed to be. And that would seem to me, that would, we're supposed to use these commissions, that would be the way to go.
You mean just for a recommendation?
Yeah, just for a recommendation.
I think that's kinda how we used to have it
Yeah.
in planning.
Yeah.
And the vehicle to get things done quicker, I think that was put into our subdivision ordinance just recently, with different kinds of plats. These have public road dedications on them, so I think planning maybe does look at that as part of the approval. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
I remember working with Christie on this, when they do particular plats.
Can you come up to the podium? Tell everybody who you are.
I am Scott Beclam with Johnson and Schofield. It used to be you could split meets and bounds parcel with a meets and bounds inscription. And they, we have to plat everything that's meets and bounds. So what they did was in, in doing so, they made a, like, an abbreviated process for those that are not creating any infrastructure, or not building any roads, not adding any utilities. They kinda put an abbreviated process in. Otherwise, I think a full plat where you're gonna develop a whole, you know, add streets and utilities, I think that has to go to the planning commission. But I don't believe, just like a couple lots split with no utility, you know, no infrastructure, I think they're doing that on an abbreviated basis to kinda speed up that process, 'cause this, even this took, I mean, we've been at this for three to four months, just trying to split this for them to separate their assets.
Isn't this used to be called like an administrative split?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Pretty much.
I think there's two, I think there is actually two processes there, I think there's one for a full development and one for no infrastructure.
Yeah, but I still think that, that's why we have these commissions, and they're familiar with those things, and I think this would add, what? You know, if you, if you started last month, it wouldn't have, we could have brought it to the planning commission last month and bring it here, so. It's
It would probably, that's, is, that's in the subdivision ordinance?
Yeah, we could look at that.
We'll take a look and see what you approved in the first place, yeah.
I know we've done it both ways, but I agree, crime is, could easily just be a note item on council.
Yeah.
And if the planning commission looked at it, so I think we'll just
Streets and everybody else.
I think we can take it back to Christie and just talk to her about it, and we can, we can address it at our next meeting.
Perfect.
So, I mean, as long as people wanna do that stuff, just know, okay, it should run through the planning commission, and then three weeks later, it goes to the council, so.
Timing wise?
Yeah, it's not such a big deal.
No.
Any further discussion? All in favor of allowing the property to be platted with vacation at a later date of the streets, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, passed. The next item on the general business is the Carol's Edition plat, where they're gonna divide their property into four lots. You wanna talk about this at all, Brian, or?
No, it's not, nothing similar, so.
Okay, any discussion? Can we get a motion and a second to approve this?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
Abstain.
Passed with an abstention. Okay, the next item is the open space lease agreement with the National Eagle Center.
This is similar to the agreement you passed last year, which really gives the planning and you know, really the planning in the open space between the Eagle Center and the condos, to the Eagle Center, to do some programming, bring in different shows and that type of stuff. In the past, we'd have to come back, do forums all the time. So we went ahead and granted them access last summer, and this is very, virtually the same thing, except this is extending the date through development. So we wouldn't have to come back here. So. The city has many other parks that we can, that we rent out, including Beach Park, obviously, Ices, Malone. But this would turn over, this really actually isn't a park that we have down as a park, this is just a space.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
You can go to Goat Yoga down there, Jeff. You can go down to Goat Yoga when they
Yeah. Okay, the next issue is the Bike Share Program app bank account, I guess we have to
Yeah, we need a motion to open a new bank account.
Okay.
And this is in the event that people can find or break the credit card, or donations, the app will send the money right to our account.
I'll move to approve that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Passed unanimously. Okay. The next one is the Wabashaw Fire Department Ladder Truck.
Alright, I guess I'm here to talk a little bit tonight about where we're at with the replacement of our ladder truck. For the last couple of years, we've been looking a little bit into the replacement of this 40-year-old truck. And we've got some issues that are coming up with that. Not able to certify the ladder anymore. Pump, last time we had a pump tested, two or three years ago, it failed the pump test. There's some things we gotta look at to make sure we hold our ISO, and in order to keep the city of Wabashaw safe, I guess we've been kinda doing a little bit of look, looking around at different trucks out there to see what's feasible for the city of Wabashaw, what would be the best for our department. And, you know, when you start looking at a ladder truck, and you look at the cost of replacing it with a new one, you're looking at about $950,000. Justification for the city of Wabashaw at a truck at that amount of money is not, we feel as a department, is not something we need to go look after. There's a lot of youth out there that are on the market, and that's what the guys started doing. The committee that was put together went out and did some looking around, and came up with a truck that they they think would be a good, a good fit for the city of Wabashaw. And that, that truck is listed $195,000. And I guess this committee, you know, went up there, did a lot of, we passed up a lot of opportunities with trucks because we just didn't get there in time. They just come on the market, they're there a day or two, and somebody usually picks them up. So what we're doing is, uh, today I'm gonna, I'm asking the council to give me the authorization, or give them the, to send out on bids, to see if anybody else around's got a truck that kinda meets that specs, or is can, uh, give me some equal or equivalent to what we're looking at. And so, that's what I'm looking at tonight, is to get a motion to do that. Send that out, and see what happens.
So we're not, we're not looking for purchase approval this evening?
No, we're just looking at something, we kinda got an idea, and, you know, we got our eyes on a truck, yes, but we also need to open it up. I feel that we can open it up to some other, you know, see if somebody's got something out there.
With generic enough specs that will get light vehicles.
Yeah.
We can't, per law, you can't narrow in, you know, put the exact mileage, the exact year, the exact build. Right, you gotta There, yeah. There's a parameters, as I said. So, we authorize these guys to go out, you know, to, to forbid or whatever, and they come up with another truck, or they come up, or this is, this truck bubbles to the top. Do they have to wait a month? Come back to buy it? And we just heard Darren say that he's losing trucks, and they do, I know they lose them in a short amount of time, if they don't act on them. So how do we, how do we ensure that Darren can, can secure this truck? Or another truck, or are we just kinda stuck with our procedure?
They won't hold it for you or anything, you don't know?
Um Yeah.
Put a short-term hold on it.
Yeah, they did say that, you know, if these guys went up and did some Yeah, they did say that, you know, if, these guys went up and did some, um, like the, the checking of the truck and stuff like that. This, this, uh, city that's got the truck right now, the truck's in service and they don't plan on getting their new trucks for another sixty days or more. So they said, yeah, if, if, if you guys are in the process of looking at some different trucks, going through the bidding process, council, we're okay with that, cause they're in no hurry to get rid of the truck or whatever. So I really.
And the difference with this one is this is through a third party. If you buy it from another city or if you buy it through a purchasing agent, you can go and do it. But this is a third party that doesn't have any collaborative purchasing things and it's not a city. So any other city that wants to buy this has to follow the.
Same process.
Open bidding process, yep.
Okay.
We make a motion to say that, you know, that we could authorize the bidding for a truck, a used ladder truck up to two hundred and twenty thousand and then authorize the fire department to go ahead and purchase once they got the bids in. Can we do that?
We've done that in the past, we did that with the Street Sweeper, I believe.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we gave Aaron the.
Tony.
Tony, yeah, Tony.
Divide the best possible.
Yep.
Well, these guys are doing their due diligence, so I, I would make that motion if we could make that motion. Or second it if you've made it, if we can do that.
You can make it.
Okay, how many that motion that, um, that they can go offer bid for a, a light truck? And they could make that decision priced up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand? Does that make, does that work? We can do that?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Um, just to point out that this truck was in the capital improvement plan in the next two years anyway, so it's a planned purchase in two years, so.
It's just accelerating it based on the opportunity.
Yep.
Yep.
What, what's the expected lifetime of, of this truck? It's what, eighteen years old now, the one you wanna purchase?
Yeah, and, and you know, as long as the ladder and the pump can, can continue to pass test, test, pass the load test on the ladder and pass the pump test on the pump, I guess that truck can probably sit around for a good forty, forty-five years. So we're, we're probably looking at another twenty-five years or I can't, I can't say that that's what's gonna happen. But, um, yeah, as long as it, as long as the, the maintenance is there, the pump holds, you know, we, and the pump on this truck that we're looking at or that we're gonna bid out is a waterless pump, which is made right up in Minneapolis. So the part replacements are, are good for getting parts for this truck. It's a Rosenbauer truck that we're trying to, to deal with and that actually also has a, you know, you know, they, they repair these trucks up in the cities, so they're, all the maintenance and stuff is, is local. And I think that's huge on the fire department. It's trying, that's our biggest problem with a lot of trucks that we get or that we have is we try to keep everything within a couple hours for maintenance. So we're not down for any length of time. But yeah, so I think we could see some years out of this.
Okay, for my ignorant question tonight is why, why does a twenty-five-hundred population town need a seventy-five-tall ladder truck? I mean, how does that go out on every call or, I mean?
No.
What's, why do we need a seventy-five-foot ladder truck in a little town like Wabashaw?
You know, and I, we've always carried a ladder truck of some sort. We've always carried, well, we've always had this, since eighty, we've had the fifty-five-foot ladder, which we have now. But in the meantime, you got the Maple Grove Apartments, we got the condos that went up. You know, we got any access downtown at the, at the buildings downtown, they're two and a half stories, which our ladder right now will just get to the top of that building, we won't be able to set anybody on top of it. So there's, there's things that have gone up that really kinda, the green bins, things like that that we can't get to with just a standard pumper or with an extension ladder, that type of thing. And there's, there's been, uh, been times where it's been very useful. And I hate, I hate to think about, you know, I've been on a couple of calls where it's like we've, we've been short ten feet on this ladder. And we haven't lost a life because of it, but we've, we've struggled for a half an hour to forty-five minutes to get this person down in a critical situation because we don't have the, the extension to do that. And I think this truck will, will give us, and I'm not gonna say, you know, the Maple Grove buildings, there's five, what, five up there?
Five.
Five. There's a lot of, lot of tenants in them buildings, a lot of possibilities there. And if we can't get to the top floor of them buildings, that's, to me, that's, as a fire chief and as a, that's a, that's a bad situation that could be prevented. So I think it's definitely a useful tool for our department.
Well, I mean, if you need mutual aid, they're thirty minutes away.
Yeah, so in thirty minutes, it's over anyway.
You know, so, I mean, which would be Lake City, correct?
Yeah, Lake City would be our closest.
Page them, then they'd have to get there, then they have to drive down, set up. I mean, you're looking at thirty minutes probably, so, I mean, justifiable, I mean, there to me is good enough to do it that way. And they're using it for a dual purpose of ladder and pumper.
Right, yep.
I think we kinda get that benefit of both of them, so.
Yeah, with this, with this truck being a ladder pumper part, good part, good way to bring it up, Tim, is that our ISO rating, I'm not gonna get into ISOs and things like that, but our ISO stays kind of at a low rating because of the simple fact we have three, three truck, three pumper trucks that are capable of pumping twelve hundred and fifty gallons a minute. If we were to lose one of them trucks, our ISO rating would start to climb back up. And then everybody's house insurance would go back up. So by keeping three pumpers on hand that are capable of pumping twelve fifty or more, we just keep everybody's ISO down and everybody's house insurance lower. It just kinda gives it all, it all kinda comes around together. So it fits, you know, so.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to allow them, allow the fire to go out on bids up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And if they find something, they can purchase it.
For a light vehicle or this vehicle. Okay?
Yep. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously.
Thanks, Darren.
Hopefully we can get rides in it.
You could bull the horn.
Okay, the next item is to schedule the twenty-twenty budget retreat date. The city staff is recommending two hours before the August city council meeting on August sixth. That'd be starting at five P M. Is that, would that be good for everybody?
Yes.
We need a motion for that or anything or no?
Nope.
It's just a schedule?
Yeah, we'll do it.
All right, that looks good. Okay, now we have donations. Anybody else wanna read them?
I will, cause I wanna correct one piece of it. Library a hundred dollars from Paul and Miriam Gins. Library three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents from Wabashaw Main Street Artists on Main. Fireworks, these are all fireworks donations, seven hundred and fifty from the Fireman's Relief. Two hundred dollars from Fred and Diane Schulberg and two hundred dollars from the Kellogg Lions Club. Correction from six-four splash pad for two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-four cents from Mr. John and Rose Delfing. And then a correction from six-four for nine thousand dollars to the Coffee Mill Ski Team from Mr. John and Rose Delfing as well. And then five hundred dollars for downtown decorations from Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation.
Get a motion to approve donations?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. I don't think we have anything, any, anybody have any announcements?
Fireworks, July fourth at dusk.
Bring your galoshes.
In Bucksbury.
In Bucksbury.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.